The Raton City Commission to Order. Michael Anck, we have a roll call please.
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Present.
Ms. Chatterley.
Present.
Ms. Chavis.
Present.
Ms. Jacomo.
Present.
Do you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 23rd, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. This time we do have two proclamations that we would like to read. First being for the Raton Fire Emergency Services Fourth of July fireworks. And I have that one, so we'll proceed to that one. Proclamation, Raton Fire and Emergency Services, July 4th fireworks display. Whereas Independence Day is one of the most important holidays the United States of America celebrates, and whereas we historically celebrate this holiday with much fanfare and fireworks displays throughout our nation, and whereas the city of Raton's own spectacular display of fireworks was truly awe inspiring in 2019 thanks to donations by its residents and lodgers tax funding, and whereas the fireworks display would not have been possible without the dedication and hard work by Raton's fire and emergency services personnel who unselfishly give an enormous amount of time and energy to this annual event for Raton's enjoyment. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, on behalf of the City of Raton, to hereby thank Chief Chris Espinosa and his personnel for making July 4th, 2019, a most remarkable and memorable event. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of July, 2019. Don't see anyone here, so we will accept it on their behalf. I just want to say I thought this year's event was spectacular. Probably the best fireworks display we've had ever. It was quite the finale. And Mr. Anck, I would like you to express our thanks for that.
I will do that, Mayor. And I would just add my appreciation to all of the city crews, Raton Fire Department, Raton Police Department, and Public Works that really went that extra mile for the Fourth of July. I agree with you. I think that was the best fireworks show and the best Fourth of July celebration that we've had. But Mayor, I would like to add to that and just state that with the balloon rally, that's not something that happens real easily. There are planning that takes place all year round. And I do want to mention my thanks to the people that are involved in that. So Raton Main Street has a balloon rally committee that consists of Christine Valentini, Kathy McQuary, Ron Schuster, Lois Johnson, and Brenda Ferry. They put a lot of work into pulling that together. And I think they really did an outstanding job. And the important thing is they made the weather cooperative.
Absolutely.
That's important. The Raton Main Street Board and the Raton ambassadors, I want to really acknowledge the efforts of all of those folks that put that extra effort into it.
Absolutely. Outstanding job. Next up, we have proclamation for Fourth of July events. Raton Main Street and Balloon Rally Committee, Commissioner Chavis.
The proclamation, the Raton Main Street and the Raton Balloon Rally Committee, Fourth of July events and international balloon rally. Whereas Raton Main Street is a community-based nonprofit organization dedicated to enhancing and enriching the life of the community as well as making Raton a desirable destination. And whereas by these efforts, Raton Main Street has organized dozens of successful events all throughout the year in Raton that are very beneficial to the community and to the city. And whereas people came from all around the state and other states and even other countries to attend these many events. And whereas Raton's Main Street has organized the Fourth of July events in the city of Raton for seven years, including fun on Historic First Street and a parade. And whereas Raton Main Street and the Raton Balloon Rally Committee have organized a very successful and highly anticipated international balloon rally for the past seven years. And whereas the hard work and the dedication of the volunteers on these boards is an esteemed asset to the community and to the city. And whereas their efforts and tireless hours of work have enriched our community and brought others to see how beautiful and fun our community. And now therefore do James Neil Sagata, the Mayor of the City of Raton, on behalf of the City of Raton, extend our appreciation to the Raton Main Street and the Raton Balloon Rally Committee for organizing these remarkable and memorable events. In witness therefore, James Neil Sagata has set his hand and sealed and caused the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of July, 2019.
Wow, I guess I kind of stole your thunder there.
You're going to get it. Let me get a message, you guys. He's not shy. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Great job. Brenda, would you like to say anything?
Not really.
Not really?
We just can't do this without the help of everybody in the community. And we just appreciate everything the city did for us to pull this off. And the ambassador, and of course my board couldn't do it without him. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
I do just want to say real quick, one big thank you to our fire and emergency services, especially on the night of our balloon blow. We ended up with a lot more people than we thought. They stepped up and made sure that they had the coverage needed and helped us. So I wanted to publicly make sure that we say thank you to them for stepping up and going above and beyond to be there that evening.
Thank you. Thank you. All righty. Item five, comments from the general public. At this time, we will take comments from the public. We ask that you be brief and to a point on your comments, if you have any. And please come to the podium, state your name, and what you'd like to comment about. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. I'll go first, so that... I've been called a windbag once today at one of these official meetings, so I will try to give you a reason not to call me Mr. Windbag. We'll try to keep it brief. But Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. City Manager and City Clerk, thank you guys for having us. I'm Mark McDonald. I am here today representing Restart. Restart is a nonprofit organization that we have formed here in Raton. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization formed in the effort and the vision of helping to solve our behavioral health and drug addiction, drug crisis that we are facing in the community. This really came about, we wanted to make sure we were chasing the right horses, that we were chasing the right missions. And so we did two community surveys. The first community survey I want to tell you about, and I can get you some follow-up information. But it was a community at large survey. We targeted CYFD clients, our own neighbors, general folks, addicts themselves, ER staff, EMS personnel, the local court system. We had a wide variety of people who participated in the survey. And we basically just asked them, is there a problem locally? And we had, of course, a 100% resounding yes, there is a drug problem locally and a drug addiction problem locally. We kind of knew that, but we wanted to base everything we do based off of data and research. And so we went forward and we did another community survey, this time targeting some of our local assets, fire departments, sheriff's department, our hospital, some entities that deal with this issue on a cyclic pattern. We asked them if they agreed that there's a problem. 100% resounding yes, there is a drug and addiction problem in this community. Of course, it's not only our community, but certainly where our focus is. We also asked in the second survey, how much of their employees' time and how much of their operational budget is spent on this cyclic pattern of addiction. And one of the unique things that we found in the first survey, after being able to talk to addicts themselves, was that we have a really big gap of care in our community. The biggest gap of care that we found from surveying addicts themselves was if they go to a rehab facility, they are sent back to this community. And oftentimes, they have burned bridges with family, or their family is an addict, and they don't have a safe place to go. They've been given tools for their initial steps of recovery, but they have no way to continue those tools for recovery. And so housing is a huge issue, and transitional housing to make sure that they return to this environment and to our community productive is a big gap that we needed to fill, that we found in our first survey. The second survey really highlighted the idea that if we do start to solve this problem comprehensively and at the root issue of breaking the cycle of addiction, not only can we save our local entities money, we can actually have a more productive society. So we said, well, how do we solve this problem? And so we started Restart as an organization. It's a large umbrella organization that'll house a multitude of efforts. But our first effort is what we call "Breaking the Cycle", and that's what we're here to briefly talk to you today about. Breaking the Cycle is a transitional housing model based off of the Oxford Housing Model. Oxford Housing is a nationally recognized transitional housing model. Has an 80% success rate. It's very democratic in its approach. All of the tenants of the house have to pay rent. They have to have a job. They have to have a certain period of sobriety before they meet requirements to be a tenant of this facility. So we could sit here and talk to you about the ins and outs of the operations of these houses. We're happy to do so, answer any follow-up questions you guys may have. And we'd even share our business plan and our operations plan with you guys so you can understand how we've made sure at a variety of levels that we have safety nets for our organization in this operation. But what we want to tell you today is that we are moving forward with this. This is greenlit. We actually have here with us today a couple of community partners who have partnered with us to provide the housing portion of it. We have more community partners who have agreed to help us with basic life skills training for these tenants to make sure that they put money in a savings account and really learn those basic life skills to get back into society. We will make sure to provide Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous trainings to make sure that they are given recurring tools to help with their sobriety. We've also set non-negotiables to ensure the protection of this organization as well as the other tenants of the house. One being relapse. If we have an individual who relapses while they're a tenant at the house, they have 15 minutes to pack their belongings and get out, and then they can schedule a follow-up to come get the rest of their belongings. But we're not merely kicking them to the street. We're linking up with our local certified peer support workers who have knowledge in this area. We're making sure that if someone is removed from the house, they are linked with someone who can get them back into a healthy state of recovery. And then we'll talk about readmission of the house. So there are lots, a lot of ins and outs to this operation. We are here today to tell you that we are moving forward. We're very happy to offer this to the community. And we're also here to invite you to be part of that public partnership. One of the things that we're most worried about is stigma. And what we're going to do as an organization to de-stigmatize these houses, one of the things is not releasing the addresses. We're working with municipal entities, the fire department, the police department, and others so that they know where these locations are. So if assistance is needed, they know what this house is about. But we are also going to start a marketing campaign from our perspective to help ensure that the community doesn't see this as a problem house. It sees it as a problem to the solution. So we wanted to give you a brief update today. I'll let Anita take the mic here for just a second and share anything she wants. But we wanted to thank you for the time to listen. Hopefully, I didn't speak too long, but I will answer any questions you guys have for me before I switch over to Anita.
No questions for Ms. McDonald?
Hi, I'm Anita Millery.
I definitely commend the work.
And this is my vision. I'm currently advocating for addicts in recovery. It's not just currently, but I started advocating for addicts back when your court started. I was the narcotics anonymous person who I've noticed recently, from that time to this time, our clientele has gotten a lot younger. I'm seeing 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, 20-year-olds, 21-year-olds. They have gotten a lot younger. And I don't necessarily see this as a bad thing because we're catching it early enough for them to be able to save their own lives and so we can help them do that. I work closely with drug court clients, with Rick Ortiz. And I do a lot of advocating. Like I help them get their social security cards, birth certificates, their IDs, help them with job search interviews. And I am a sponsor for women. I help a lot of young women to the smallest detail as far as if they need an outfit for an interview, I will take them and provide that. And this is just something I do. It's a passion. I am also a mentor, and I will show them how to obtain checking and savings accounts and show them how to budget. I will be doing weekly meetings in these houses. I am like the house mother of all these houses. We've got to have the weekly meetings to make sure that everything's, you know, that I'm overseeing that their progress or if I can accommodate any needs that they may have to make sure that the intake process that Judge Walter and I will be doing together will show us what services they need. And I'm coming up with a lot of good services they need. From CASA, one of them is parenting. It's a new program that they've come for, which, for the children and the women. Or if it's... I've even had males come up to me and wanting to get involved in their children's lives, so I would also refer them to the program. So I'm excited to get this started. And here's the thing. Back in 2002 was the last time I was an addict. And I didn't have an address, and I didn't have a drug program. Because I didn't have this address, I went straight to prison for two years and came out to my children. I wish I had had this opportunity that we are currently going to give to these young men and women. And I just feel that this gap is really important in Raton. I see a huge opioid, opioid problem, the methamphetamine. I mean, it's getting worse. People are dying. I just want to do everything that we can with this program. If you would support us and help us get started. I mean, we've already laid it down, so I'm just asking for your support. And I truly believe in the program and that these sober living homes is the solution. And that's why we're calling it "Breaking the Cycle", because this cycle has gone on generation to generation, generation. I was the CASA coordinator for seven years, working side by side with Judge Paternoster in attorneys. And I seen firsthand all the abuse that these children have gone through because their parents were addicts. And it was a catch-22 because they couldn't apply for housing. When they did their tuition plan and ready to bring these kids home, they didn't have a home to bring them to. They couldn't apply for housing because they didn't have the children. They couldn't apply for services, financial services, food stamps, because they didn't have the children. So nine times out of 10, those kids stood in the foster system and were up for adoption because families were not willing to step up and take that chance again. So I truly feel like this would help a lot of the problems. There's no foster care programs here, hardly any. And I think that this could truly help solve that problem as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I had a discussion with Anita at the Economic Development graduation, and I was impressed with her presentation and program then. So I think it's something that... Enjoy a conversation with Mark and you and Anita. We can get together with Scott.
Sure.
And see the groundworks and go from there.
Can you give us an overview of your program?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us an overview of your program so that...
Something we can look at?
Yes, absolutely. I will make sure to email those to you. Yes. And contact information as well.
Appreciate it, Mark. Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner, I can just make some comments on this. This is a problem that, you know, has come in front of us and five years that I've been here. And I see it from the perspective of the city police. They have a very specific role in what they do. From the ambulance service and the emergency response, a very specific role. On the hospital board, I hear that role of the emergency room people, the medical people there. And I've listened to the county represented by the sheriff's office and the detention center. And I'm telling you that there is just, has been a missing piece to this. We're missing a piece because all of those agencies have a specific role, but they really can't address the issue. And so this is pretty refreshing to me. It's definitely something that we want to work with this group because there's a big need that has not been met. And the state of New Mexico has, I think they have something of a presence again here, but for a lot of that time, they just picked up and disappeared and left and really ceased to provide those services. I think we want to remind them of their responsibility. Congressman Luhan has been here a number of times to talk about this issue. And I can tell you that the problem exists, and it's not going to get better without us all cooperating. It's going to get worse. And so we have to address this. We need these services in town. And I will certainly be meeting with these folks and try to establish that partnership. I think it's very necessary in that town.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Could we ask you to introduce your benefactors?
Yes, absolutely. That's our... So these are one of the most vital community partners we could have found when we're looking for people generous enough to help us with this mission. We've actually been open, or been welcomed with open arms by the majority of the community. This has been overwhelming. But one of the most important key components was finding houses, finding real estate, and people who are willing to really take a risk with us, if you will, in solving this problem. And this is Mr. Mark and Virginia Blosser, who have agreed to partner with us to work out all the kinks. I think they've put in just as much work as we have, if not more, with making sure that, you know, the agreements between the entity and the properties themselves are, you know, protected and that everything moves forward for success has been largely due to them. So thank you. And on behalf of the City of Raton and everybody here, I would like to have a round of applause for them because they've been incredible.
And Mayor, I'm just sad that if you have, the person has a concern of, you know, not in my backyard, guess what? It already is in your backyard. This problem exists in every neighborhood in Raton. So this is a way to address that.
And I think the Oxford model that they're using is just awesome. Just really... So thank you, Anita. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Blossers. Appreciate you all very much.
Thank you very much. All righty. Okay, once again, anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? See no one, we'll move on to item six, the business portion of the meeting. Six A, approval of June 25th, 2019, regular commission meeting minutes. All have a chance to review them, I hope?
I found no corrections or... Can I make a move to approve it?
Mayor, Commissioner, I did make a couple spelling corrections. I had misspelled Gallagher and William Zoe Elliott's names. So I did make those minor corrections.
I'll second.
I have motion as second to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor? Well, by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, report to the commission from Jared Chatterley on the Denver Outdoor Retailer Show. Mr. Chatterley.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Came to make a report on the outdoor retailer show. As you're aware, the outdoor retailer show was June 17th through the 20th. We distributed approximately 1,000 of the RAC cards, 1,500 carabiners, and about that same number of Raton stickers. We were a part of the New Mexico Partnership booth. Along with Raton, there was Tucumcari, Las Cruces, and Farmington. Las Cruces and Farmington pretty much just had a presence, just like banners. Wasn't really anybody there who was actually working the show. Farmington came to play. They had their mayor, city council, county commissioner, were all there, and their dotted up, looking sharp, outdoor recreation industry initiative badges on there. But to be honest, I think Raton did a better job of promoting itself. They spent a lot of time taking pictures of themselves and for their booth, and not as much time on the floor. But I think overall, it was a very good thing. I don't know necessarily if anybody's going to, after this one visit, relocate to Raton. But I think in general, the relationship that was built by Raton with New Mexico Partnership is going to pay dividends in the future. Came to find out and associating with them, the vice president of New Mexico Partnership went to Brigham Young University, stayed in the same dorm complex that I stayed when I went to BYU. And so we bonded, I guess you might say, over that. And we've had several email conversations after having come back from the outdoor retailer show about what could be done better. And from the conversations, it looks like they won't offer this opportunity again. They'll just have a New Mexico-focused booth. And if there's an entity that wants to go, they'll have to go on their own and get their own booth. Part of that was because Farmington was naughty. They did some bad things. So they... The New Mexico Partnership decided it was better that New Mexico just represent itself. And if there's communities that want to go, they'd be on their own to do that. And so I think should Raton participate in the future? I don't know if we would necessarily need a booth. I think with the relationships between the tourism department, the new outdoor recreation division, and New Mexico Partnership, Raton could get just as much bang for its buck just being, partnering with them as... Because really, to make good use of the show, you don't really need a booth per se, but you just need a place to put your items, you're distributing, and then actually be on the floor talking to people and such like that. So if we were able just to work with them and not actually have our own booth, I think we could do just as well and save us a lot of money. Probably the most interesting story was I had the RAC card, sticker, and the carabiners. And I'd go up to a booth and I'd say, "Happy outdoor retailer show from Raton, New Mexico. Glad you're here." And this one individual looked at me, an older gentleman, and gave me this nasty look. I thought he was going to yell at me for some... I don't know. He was not pleasant. Then he says, "Randy." I'm like, "Randy Rubin?" He's like, "Exactly." Is he still there? And what's interesting is that didn't happen just once, but twice. Talking to random people at the outdoor retailer show, they knew Randy Rubin from Raton, New Mexico.
That's happened to me. The last municipal thing was...
Randy Rubin.
Yeah. Randy.
Not the time for the Randy.
Yeah. Maybe he should be the ambassador since everybody always goes from there. But probably the last highlight was as we were walking the floor, second to last day, we saw a Raton sticker on somebody's water bottle already walking around the floor.
Cool.
So, yeah. I think it was well. I have a meeting with the cabinet secretary for tourism in August to talk about... Because from where I got, New Mexico Partnership did this by themselves. There was no interaction from tourism this year. And so we're going to try to get tourism, New Mexico Partnership, and the new recreation division to do a very large, very impressive, over-the-top New Mexico booth to let people know that New Mexico, along with Raton, are all in for outdoor recreation.
Thank you, Jared.
You bet.
Any comments or questions for Jared?
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Item C, public hearing for City of Raton Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP. Mr. Anck.
I'm going to put a couple of copies, Mayor...
We get one tour.
...of the existing infrastructure capital improvement. Couple there. Mayor, Commissioner, it's a time of year annually where we consider updates to our infrastructure capital improvement plan. And what you have is the plan that was submitted in September 2018. We would anticipate making revisions to the plan and bringing those revisions to the commission through your consideration by the second meeting in August of this year. And then submit those to State of Mexico in September. So we've got three meetings to talk about the infrastructure capital improvement plan. The importance of this plan would be, number one, for capital outlay requests to the legislature. The legislature really coordinates your request with the priorities that you set in this infrastructure capital improvement plan. Equally important for community development block grant, a program that we had just recently submitted. And so, there are certain programs that having, establishing that as a priority would be especially important. It is required that we submit this in September, as we stated, and I'll quickly go through the top five that we have listed previously. But Mayor Commission, I think the purpose of this really is to, is to get input from the public, to have the public stand up in these public hearings and we'll have more of those before the adoption and give us that input. We also solicit input from department heads, something that the staff will work on throughout the year and we'll talk about things that we have funded from this list that's here now and things that may have got some funding, but will continue to be a priority on the list. So, I'll, real quickly, as just a way of getting started, Mayor, kind of go down the top priorities that we've established in the past and seems like for the last several years, the number one priority for the infrastructure capital improvement plan has been street improvements or street reconstruction. And we've said, year after year, you could throw a dart at a city map and whatever streets you hit, it needs improvements or reconstruction. And last time, we had talked about some maintenance work on streets that had recently been reconstructed, but almost immediately, you start on some maintenance work and there we were talking about ceiling of cracks that have developed or some kind of pavement resealing or resurfacing. And then we have streets that need full reconstruction and so the task is very large. We've said in past years that if we did everything that we want to do on streets, that likely we would exceed $50 million and our primary source of funding this locally is the gas tax. So, we've said that out of 17 cents of tax that is paid on a gallon of gas purchased in Rattone, the city of Rattone gets about two cents a gallon. And so, that will generate maybe about $150,000 a year and a good year, maybe a little bit north of that, but you can see that to tackle maybe $50 million of needs with that 150 is not really going to add a, and so we tried to use that money to leverage additional monies and we talk about those programs through the year, but certainly we have included this as a request for the legislature in past years and I would think that we would talk about that again come legislative time in October or November. So, it's something that we will work on continuously, but we can talk about priorities on streets. Another priority is our drainage system. So, we've stated that we have an extensive storm drainage system at Rattone and there are basically two components to that. There are, there's a storm drainage system throughout most of the downtown area and the residential area above the downtown area. That's the original town site. That system dates back to the 1930s. We did some work on that with capital outlay a few years ago, but we have extensive needs to rehabilitate that system. So, I believe that's a priority. If we, if we fail to rehabilitate that system, we see flooding impacts on residents and on businesses and I think that with work we've done in the last five years, we have reduced that risk significantly, but we have seen that flooding impact in past years and I think it's something that we want to be aware of. And then the second component to our storm drain system are these channels that were constructed in 1930s out of sandstone, rubble, rock. It's a rectangular, open channel and of course, that's a long time for that type of construction and we are really seeing a lot of attention needed to those channels, really full reconstruction. And we have an extensive system of those that has that need. So, we'll talk about that, but that's why that ranks as a high priority. We specified a particular project, an east side street improvement project last year and that's the place that we have worked before. It's been some time, but several CDVG projects were applied there. To apply CDVG to a particular area would require the gathering of extensive information from residents there, income information specifically. So, we opted for a community wide development, a community wide improvement project this year, but still, we have identified that because of that potential to meet CDVG requirements and we can talk about where we want that to land in the future. The Great Blocks project, we've listed that as a high priority. We have completed phase one of the Great Blocks project. We currently are seeking some funding for phase two. We've estimated that phase two could cost up to a million dollars. So, we're chasing a couple of avenues there for that funding and we have identified that as a priority. And then number five, we've talked about Lake Malloya Dam improvements. If you go clear to the end of the seat, you see about $50 million would be needed for Lake Malloya Dam improvements and that's not a typo. That's the scale of improvements that would be needed to meet all of the current requirements that the state engineer has for dams. This is a dam that was built over several phases, starting in 1907 and then the latest phase in 1948 and so the standards for dam safety change over that time. And one of the big changes is spillway capacity. So, the largest number in there is spillway capacity, but there are other things that are into that. Now, Rattone Water Works has continued work on Lake Malloya Dam. They recently installed some new instrumentation on the dam. They'll be collecting data from that instrumentation. It'll help us monitor the performance of the dam. And then this week, we'll talk to the dam safety bureau, the state engineer office about a request to fund two projects on Lake Malloya Dam. It's a request that would go to their capital outlay and we've talked about this since January with the state engineer. So, we would expect a cooperative phone call with the state engineer, we'll report back to you on that request. And then you have an extensive list of other priorities that we have in here. Some things have changed over time, some things have been completed. I think this is a meeting where we talk about new priorities. If we, in the work that we've done recently, see that something is not listed here at all or it's a low priority and we might want to move that up, that's a discussion we can have. We could maybe shuffle around some of these top priorities. This is where we open this up for discussion, Mayor Commission.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry. As Mr. Barry stated, this is a public hearing for our ICIP plan. This time, we will take any input from the public as well as fellow commissioners.
I had a couple of comments. I think this is explaining to me, you know, that it's important for capital outlay and CDVG and so some of the things on here may not suit that type of project, but I was thinking about our economic development summit and how our decision-making framework is geared toward our workforce and outdoor recreation decisions. And so, there were some projects on here that we may consider, even though the list is long, moving up the list a little bit, one of them might be the Highway 72 page shoulder, which is number eight. I'm not suggesting that we need to do them now, but just because that could open up that for just awesome biking between Rattone and the state park. And then the state park visitor center is on there as a 2024. There are some other park improvement things on there. And there's also the downtown renovation, which is part of, so some of those things would fit into our economic development framework and maybe not as important on the ICIP, but maybe even in the comprehensive plan or some other prioritizing those kind of things.
All righty. Any other comments?
Mayor Commission, if I could, and Jason, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but one thing that we've talked about with the local government division under the CDVG program is a potential CDVG application for activities that basically would be the elimination of slum and blight. And Jason, you're probably in a better position to address their philosophy on that, but, you know, we would ask the question, can we use something like that to meet one of our, obviously, priorities is cleaning up the town, so.
Mayor Commission, the hub national objective, clearly less elimination of slum and blight as one of their objectives towards the CDVG program. Under the past administration, those applications weren't even considered. It's my understanding from Doug, our project manager, that CDVG is undergoing kind of a strategic plan for the next four to five years and that there is discussion of at least allowing that to be a category and how much weight they assign to it. You know, in New Mexico, it seems to be that water is king and what Washington is essentially told our, our local folks is that there is no slum and blight in New Mexico. That's a urban Detroit term that doesn't apply to a rural setting and that it's not really in sync with the national program. We've made an elegant case that that's not exactly true and, you know, that definition can change depending on where you are. A vacant building in Chicago is no different than a vacant building in downtown Rattone, but we will probably not see any change in that before the current cycle, definitely not, but it sounded like it might be two grant cycles away before it can change and maybe be taken effect.
Clear.
And then on, on the ICIP front, another thing that they point out is that a good ICIP should have less projects, not more, you know, 12 to 15, that as a body and a community, you can have a plan to talk about everything, but ICIP is about funding strategies for these specific things and they're looking at, you know, if on a CDVG application, if your project is, on the ICIP, you get three points. If it lists CDVG funding as a potential funding source, you get two additional points. And there's only so many funding source categories that are put on there. Some of them are kind of ceremonial, the Tigray Canyon Visitor Center. We would never receive capital outlay for that project, but we are stating our support of that project if the state were to do it. The Highway 72 page shoulder, that was, if you remember, Emma Green came last year about this time, she was pursuing a tap application for Highway 72. With it being out of the city limits, I'm not sure it would really be eligible or not, but it was kind of a symbolic gesture supporting her application. So, it's not a hard and fast rule that what's on there is going to be what we go to the legislature with or CDVG, but definitely you can, you can put it on there to kind of support something. There's avenues, if you're working on a joint project with the county, you can support theirs by assigning it to both your agency and their agency or the senior center as well. So, that's kind of how the tool works. The database is getting better to remove projects. If there's duplication or things that you don't think are warranted, you can pull them off. If you think you might ever like them though, I would leave them on and slide them to 2025 because the lower that number and then on its entity number, the longer it's been on the ICIP, the more it shows that you've planned the project. So, some of these, like the depot, maybe it's been on the ICIP for 12 years and when we get to that funding source, they say, "Hey, yeah, you know, this has been a priority for a long time." Some of them, I think like Roundhouse Trail lighting, a couple of years ago when Jared and I talked, we thought there might be a grant opportunity out there for it, so we threw it on there, whether, you know, it would be realistic for capital outlay. Sometimes those type projects aren't real favorable to legislatures. They like buying public works equipment, which I'm happy with and they don't mind street work, but it seems like the softer projects have a hard time getting funded.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Go on.
All right, and I'm assuming, Mr. Barry, this is just the first of many, correct?
That's right, Mayor. We will anticipate three more public hearings. And I would state that a person out there that wishes to make their thoughts known, they can come to the meeting and stand up and give you their ideas, they can write something to us and put it in the mail, they can drop something off at City Hall, they can leave us a voicemail or talk to us on the phone, any, any method that they want to, to give us contact on that is certainly acceptable.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to item G, deliberate an act on bid award for Schuler Theater renovation project. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Commission, an item that we have talked about in the past. We have worked with our architects, our outfit design to prepare bid documents and accept the bids for improvements to the Schuler Theater. This primarily is improvements that will take place in the basement area. The basement area is used as dressing rooms. All of the visitors that perform with the Schuler would use this area. A lot of the acts that involve children who are locally are passing through use the area and the area has really lacked attention over a number of years and this has pointed out to me that the basement area is not very good. And so, we started working on this, we established a budget that my proposal to you would be from budget tax funding and we have accepted the bids. So, you see the bids here, it's competitive process, we received four bids, a little bid submitted by a company, Nature Scares, they're located in San Juan, New Mexico. Another bid came in at $22,980 and I think that's in line with what we had in mind for a budget on the project. I would recommend award of a contract to disrupt the project to Nature Scares and approval of the funding for this project. If it's approved by the commission tonight, we have asked the contractors to start in late July, that's when we have less usage of the Schuler Theater and the best opportunity to do the work and then complete that before the Gate City Music Festival. There's a lot of painting involved, there is a lot of repair of floors, walls, ceilings, replacement of light fixtures, doors, sinks, other plumbing fixtures and in general, a sprucing up of the area.
All right. Mr. Barry's recommendation that we award this bid to Nature Scares contractors out of San Juan, New Mexico. Is there any comments, questions for Mr. Barry?
I think this is a good project. I was excited to see this happening. It's pretty bad down there. I think it'll be, especially when it has such a big impact on all the people visiting us from out of state.
Yeah, I think we were on the tour together, right? Those spooky spots.
Make a motion to approve bid award for Schuler Theater renovation project.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to accept the bid award to Nature Scares out of San Juan, New Mexico. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate an act on resolution 2019-40, city of Rattone participation in application for better utilizing investments to leverage development bill, transportation discretionary grant, the continuation of improvements to segments of the BNSF railroad on which Amtrak Southwest Chief operates. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Commission, over the last seven years, the city of Rattone has participated with other local government agencies, cities and counties that are located in Kansas, Colorado and New Mexico along the route of Southwest Chief. Southwest Chief operates on lines that are opened by, owned by Burlington Northern Santa Fe. They operate some freight in Kansas and then some freight in Colorado, but no freight in New Mexico. And one of the primary purposes now of that line is the operation of the Southwest Chief operated by Amtrak. They operate between Chicago and Los Angeles with the train going each direction each day and the communities have really formed a strong grassroots partnership to, to fund and keep this service in place and find funding for track improvements that are necessary. And in the past, the group has jointly sponsored grant applications through a federal pro- And in the past, the group has jointly sponsored grant applications through a federal program that was known as the Tiger Grant, and the group has successfully received three Tiger Grant applications that have been funded. And so you have the information in the packet about those past projects, but there was extensive federal money. This allowed some leveraging of the local dollars through Amtrak, bringing dollars to the project, and BNSF bringing projects to the dollar, dollars to the project. In addition, the states of Kansas, Colorado, and New Mexico have also contributed money to the project. And so the program really is effective. It's got national attention as far as, as an effective grassroots program for transportation improvements, and it's been well received at the federal level, and the three Tiger Grants, as mentioned, have been funded in the past. Now currently, there is not a Tiger Grant program anymore. There's a new program called BUILD, which stands for Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development. I see that Commissioner Fernandez is here representing Colfax County. Colfax County is currently administering the Tiger Nine Grant, and that work, I think, we're in the environmental phase and the construction is set to go. All of the parties have come to the table with their matching funds, although there was a little issue with Amtrak early on, and that's been resolved. And so now the group anticipates an application under the new BUILD program. This will be with the City of Trinidad's primary sponsor. So in the past, Garden City, Kansas, has acted as a sponsor, Lahuna, Colorado, has acted as a sponsor, Colfax County, New Mexico, has acted as a sponsor, and now we're back to Colorado with Trinidad. The request of the Rattown City Commission, as you see in the attached resolution, is that the city would commit twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the application, which we're going to affect if the application's accepted. So we have done that with each of the past applications, and three successful ones provided funding to this, and we bring this opportunity again. My recommendation is wholeheartedly that we support the BUILD application and commit to the funding by approving the resolution. There is a deadline coming up, as you see in the information packet, on the application, so your timely response tonight with that would allow Rattown to make that commitment and be a part of the application. And I'll hold up there for any questions. And Commissioner Fernandez, would you like to address this or?
Well, let me just say that we had a commission meeting today, and we passed the same resolution for the twelve thousand five hundred dollars also, just to let you all know.
Thank you.
If you have any questions?
Any questions for Commissioner Fernandez?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Glenn.
I would move to approve Resolution Twenty-Nineteen dash forty for the BUILD program.
Okay, have a motion.
Oh, second?
And a second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Twenty-Nineteen forty for the BUILD program. So any further discussion? Glenn, can we have a roll call, will please?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Chris Sagata?
Yes. Just like to thank you, Commissioner Fernandez, and all the things the county has done in this involvement with the Southwest Chief, you know, it's a vital part of our community, and it's sure is good to see the Boy Scouts getting off of that thing this summer. It's, it's something that we need. So we thank you for your work as well.
I would give my thanks to Colfax County for sponsoring the Tiger Nine Grant and for being so active over all these years in defending the Southwest Chief, been very effective. Of course, we always mention the efforts of Bill Solvo, who's really been a champion, and is still working on this, is still very active in this. And I failed to mention, Bear, that if this application is successful, the group is requesting twenty-five million dollars for the BUILD program, which is not unreasonable, so that's a lot of leveraging of these local dollars.
Cool, thank you. Thanks, Ray. Item F, deliberate an act on Better City Economic Development Contract Addendum Number Two, Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, you see the addendum number two, the original contract was approved up to forty-eight thousand dollars, and then subsequently, there was an adjustment to that. I think that they are requesting an increased contract budget from forty-eight thousand dollars to seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. I would just, as a reminder, say that this is coming from general fund reserves. We had set aside some money for revolving loan funds some years back, but that's fully committed, so we are talking about general fund reserves. There is expanded services and an expanded schedule as well. So Better City did conduct an economic development boot camp with the Rattown City Commission. They then traveled back to town and conducted a public meeting that was held on June twenty-seventh. And the purpose of the public meeting is really to report the efforts that we have accomplished so far. We really have identified five focus areas that we think are good strategies for Rattown to pursue in economic development. Those areas consist of downtown revitalization, business retention and expansion, entrepreneurship, workforce development, and outdoor recreation. And of course, Better City had stated to the commission, has stated to the public, that for an economic development plan to really be effective, we have to find a way to pay for that. And so we have talked about bringing to the commission a consideration of a grocery receipts tax increment that would be specific to these, these focus areas of economic development. So we are talking to New Mexico Tax and Rev currently about that. We anticipate bringing that action to the commission. Of course, we want to keep the public informed about the increments and what would happen under that proposal, so that's why we're, we're talking about it, that's why we conduct the public meetings, and that's, and expanded services that Better City is, is providing. But we are looking at keeping them on through the early months of twenty-twenty, but we'll see the implementation of parts of this plan. And I'll hold up, hold up there, Mayor, and answer any questions, Mayor.
How much questions for Mr. Berry?
I have a question. It's, it's my understanding that we already approved the budget adjustment, but this is just changing how the funds were used, is that correct?
That's correct. The seventy-eight thousand three seventy-five was what was approved with the contract development number one, so I guess they were just requesting to reallocate the scope of work and make an adjustment to that. So the amount was already approved, and that's not going to increase. It was already.
I definitely like that this adjustment does allow for a full year contract.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Better City Economic Development Contract Addendum Number Two.
Motion. And a motion and a second to approve Contract Addendum Number Two of Better City Economic Development. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item G, City Managers' Report, Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I have a really brief report because I've talked about a number of things I have here and other parts of the meeting tonight, so that's the good news. Myself and Jason Phillips, we did attend the National Transportation Planning Organization meeting in Springer recently. We had discussed the NMDOT call for projects, which Rattown had responded to. They gave us the schedule, they had informed us that they would be looking at some action on that this fall, probably October. They went through the submissions, it is a very competitive process, but we think that we have a good project in on this, so we'll report back to you as that develops and we hear more. We had hoped to meet the new district for District Engineer, he had a conflict, so we were not able to meet with him, but we want to follow up on that. There's a number of, of things that we want to talk to DOT about in regard to conditions on South Second Street, where we do have something of an agreement to share responsibilities on South Second Street and some other streets. We want to clarify that with the DOT and see some improvements done on South Second Street. We also want to talk about some of the condition frontage roads in Rattown, where again, there is something of a loose agreement to share responsibilities. And we want to talk about the traffic backups that occur at the intersection of I-25 and the Clayton Highway. I did go out on Sunday, and I think a lot of you have stated, and we see this around town a lot, that there are a lot of people traveling there, and that's really a bottleneck. And so people become frustrated, I think that's probably a poor reflection on Rattown, and we're going to remind the DOT that that's a, that is an issue that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. So we anticipate setting that meeting, I'll report back to you on that. I have one other thing, Mayor and Commissioner, I would report to you, that the City of Rattown has hired a full-time code enforcement slash zoning enforcement officer, that is Dusty Russell, will be the new person, he will be working through the fire department. He has started his duties this week. He is transitioning from the Union County Emergency Management position, so he'll make sure that no balls are dropped on that end, he'll be working with Union County on that transition. But this will be the first time that Rattown has had a person dedicated to those things, and I would really label it as a community redevelopment position, because there's a lot of things and new strategies and new initiatives that are involved in that job that really exceed simple code enforcement or simple zoning task. But we are seeing some development in town, some zoning business that we haven't seen in the past, and so I think there's some encouraging signs there, but we have filled that position now, and I think it's one of those key strategies that we've talked about in the past that is absolutely necessary for the community.
All right. That's it?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Hurry again. Any other comments from the Commissioners at this time? Commissioner Catherie, Commissioner Jacomo? Commissioner Chavez?
I mean.
Good, how about you, Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Very good, thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other.
I wanted to address everyone here, that, you know, the same issue came up with us today. I attended a NERPO meeting a couple of months ago concerning the, exactly what you said, Mr. City Manager Scott, that I came into town, we were camping up at the lake, and I came into town, took the frontage road, I couldn't believe the amount of traffic. And I did mention it to the, to the lady that's, that was in charge of DOT, and she informed me that they're doing studies, and I, and I let her know at that meeting, you know, if you want a study, just go down there, go down there and look and see exactly what's going to happen here. Here's my other concern, not only that there's possibly going to be a serious accident here, a whole bunch of people are going to get tailgated there, but the other issue also on top of that is we have whip coming through, and, you know, that's a designated highway for whip to come through all the time, and I just think that we're going to have a major disaster here. What I've asked Chairman Bobby Lee Dooley to do is, he knows apparently the new director of DOT, and I asked him before we left to Las Vegas to coordinate a meeting with him, and also I asked it, and that's why I came here today to ask if we can get a, a meeting with him, once he does that, so that we can coordinate with the city folks here, the city officials, and, and talk, because this, you're right, this is very serious here. And, you know, we got, we had the sheriff's office out there this weekend, because we got a bunch of calls in saying, you know, what are you guys doing here? We need to direct some traffic. They either need a light up there at that Clayton Highway, I thought maybe a roundabout of some sort, or, or an extra lane, because it's getting worse and worse, and you're exactly right, Scott is, you know, totally frustrated. We cannot allow this to continue on, you know, these people are coming in from Oklahoma and Texas, and it's not only for the holidays, it's for the, you know, when they get out of school, when they're doing, when they're going skiing, I mean, it's, it's a big issue. I mean, it's a big issue right now on top of the past with that one lane, the bottleneck up there also, but, you know, there, I think there's something more simple they could do here quickly. So once we get that meeting going and Bobby talks to, to this individual, I'd like to have all you included in that meeting if we can, so that we can sit down and tell them and show them exactly how important this is, and we need to get something done here quickly, because, you know, we're expanding our sheriff's department out there directing traffic for, I asked Sheriff Bakary how long that take, he said it took at least twenty, twenty-five minutes to get all them folks going. Of course, there's stopping traffic there, but, you know, when, they have other things they ought to be doing on the streets and instead of directing traffic, but we did, we got a lot of calls in this Fourth of July holiday and weekend, and, not weekend, but during the week, and so I just wanted to stop in real quick, I got another meeting I got to go to at seven fifteen, but I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time to speak and, you know.
Sure, sorry I missed your hand there.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
I think, I think it's becoming more and more frequent, we see this quite a bit, and I would say this, there is a new district engineer, and I think, you know, we want to start out with him and kind of give him the courtesy of starting there, and then I think we want to talk to the Cabinet Secretary. But the Transportation Commission will meet in Las Vegas in November, and I think that we want to show up there and really tell the entire Transportation Commission what concern this is, show them some photos of what's going on. I, I don't think this would be allowed on an interstate highway anywhere else in New Mexico, but I think they maybe view us as a frontier town that we don't, we don't concern ourselves a lot with, and I think we should show up and we can work together on that in November at the Transportation Commission meeting in Las Vegas.
Appreciate that, so. Thank you all for your time. Thank you, Rodney. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll try this again. Any other business? We are adjourned, thank you.